So here's Alexandra. She's one of the more recent additions to Diane's campaign. She came out from San Francisco. And so she's going to go through some of the science in the behind these ideas. Okay, so I think that in the context of the World War III threat, in the context of a very clearly defined battle that we are fighting against the system of empire, the most recent form being the British Empire, which Stephanie and Diane went through very clearly. I want to address the idea of this World War III question and what is an anti-war policy? How are we actually going to stop the direction that things are going in? Because in my mind, and what I've brought up in the past, is that it's inevitable that say from some miraculous act of God, we make it to the November election. And Obama loses. He'd probably just bomb the whole country. He'd be like Hitler in the bunker. Hitler wasn't, you know, Hitler's response to losing was to destroy Germany, destroy its sculptures, tell its people they weren't worthy to live anymore because they couldn't physically support his system. And then, so it's in, it's predestined unless there's a real change that World War III is what's going to happen. And it's in a governmental sense. It's also in a universal sense. Like Diane brought up this asteroid that nearly hit the Earth, right? The Earth is actually changing its position in the galaxy. That things are changing. The universe is always changing. And if you don't go along with it, you will suffer a very similar fate. Now, I think most of you, well, because I'll say, well, looking back at this World War III threat, why is it wrong? Because I know, I'm from San Francisco. And, you know, people will walk around the street with these pictures of children whose legs have been blown off. Or you'll see, you know, just these horrible gruesome sights from the Iraq and Afghan and other such wars. You know, landmines in Nepal or wherever, you know, these types of things. And, and so you see something like that and it's horrifying. And you develop a certain emotional state. And then you probably just get so horrified that you don't actually do anything about it. Because when you're looking at this young person, you're not thinking like, damn, that's a young person whose creativity was taken away. That's a young person that could have been the next Mozart or could have contributed something great to human progress. Most people don't actually think that way. And so instead of actually continuing to have an identity of fighting it, they just, they march in the streets of San Francisco or they look at these pictures and they chant things. And then they go home and they smoke pot. Or, you know, they get a tattoo, they pierce something. And they think, man, this is just, this is really messed up. And they see no way out of it. And, and so what I was thinking is, is the same way that Einstein sat in his mind as a young person, he sat on a beam of light and thought, what would it be like to ride on a beam of light? I think if we are really going to reverse this trajectory towards World War III, what I would suggest is that we sit on a strand of hair, what remains thereof, or on a brain cell of Lyndon LaRouche and try to think about how he approaches every situation. Right? Because Stephanie brought up this really important point that when this World War III threat sort of re-evolved a few months ago, it's not like the generals came to Mr. LaRouche and said, hey, we're about to go to war with Russia and China. Can you post that on your website? Because CNN's not ready for it yet. He went to them, right? He went to Wilkerson. He went to General Hor. He went to all these folks within the military and told them what was happening. And of course, they respected it because he's been leading them behind the scenes, so to speak, for decades. Now, going back, leaving LaRouche for one second and going to a dreadlock of some San Francisco protester, the irony is the anti-war solution was not too far from them. That if they were to look 20 miles to the east towards Berkeley or 40 miles to the east towards Lawrence Livermore, the actual solution to actually stopping war and creating world peace in a real way would have been right there for them at Lawrence Livermore Laboratories, you know, it would have actually been right there. And the reason is because it's been there since the '70s, since Mr. LaRouche led the fight for the Strategic Defense Initiative. So being that Mr. LaRouche isn't going to be around much longer and compared to him, most of us are still pretty damn stupid and don't get it, to be blunt. Or actually, to be mild, I should say. I wanted to take a quick little glimpse at Mr. LaRouche's anti-war proposal. Now, I wanted to start, now, some of you might know more about this period than I do because most of you actually lived it. So I think it's good to keep your personal memories and ideas in mind because they're not unuseful. I think people should use their imagination a little bit and reflect on where we've been because we're almost in the exact same place where, you know, Diane and Stephanie brought up Rigozin and how, you know, the former ambassador to NATO who upon leaving to become the deputy prime minister of Russia says that war with Iran is an attack on Russia and it's very close. Well, this same individual, a few months ago in October, proposed to deal with that very asteroid that Diane was talking about. His proposal was to bring something forth called the Strategic Defense of Earth. And that our military, instead of building all these anti-ballistic missiles, which are outdated technology anyway, and pointing them at each other, we should actually get rid of all of these stupid short-range nuclear things and actually work together to use laser technologies, plasma technologies, particle accelerators, the latest breakthroughs towards destroying asteroids, making them impotent and obsolete. Or figuring out how to use them in some way, to mine them or maybe shoot them at something. And I don't know, whatever, do some experiments. But have some fun with those rocks. Give them some life. Yeah, right, aim it towards Buckingham Palace. How can we shoot an asteroid with a laser and get it to plop in bed with the Queen? So, but here's the funny thing. So he's suggesting this thing. And Rigozin, make no mistakes about it, we could go through it in more detail, but I'm not going to right now. He is with Lynn. He is influenced by Lynn. He's influenced, it's not just like, oh, isn't that nice? So what you have right now is you have this beautiful counterpoint where the American system and American ideas are now from Russia being reflected back on us. But it's not just a coincidence. This has actually been mediated, since we haven't built the Bering Strait Tunnel yet, this has actually been mediated through Lyndon LaRouche himself, that he's shaped this history. So I wanted to go through very quickly this cycle that we've been in or this, the change that has occurred. So I wanted to start by showing a video of Mr. LaRouche right after Reagan gave his famous March 1983 speech on the SDI, which I'm sure most in the room have seen. So we'll go straight to Lynn.
Anti-missile beam weapons fall into two general classes. In the first class, a laser beam burns a hole in the missile, a warhead. In the second class, the beam striking the missile creates a shock effect so that the metal or ceramic of the missile seems to explode. In the second class, a beam carrying a punch of a few thousand kilowatts in a pulse of less than one billionth of a second can destroy any missile or warhead which the Soviets might shoot up. If we equip these beams with efficient detection and aiming systems, these beams can be fired accurately in a missile from more than 1,000 miles away. These are the most powerful weapons ever developed. Lasers fire at the speed of light. And in the best case, a pulse of less than a billionth of a second can destroy any missile the Soviets could deploy. The method we must use is called layered strategic ballistic missile defense. The first line of defense is beam weapons, which are assigned to destroy Soviet missiles at the moment those missiles are launched. The second line of defense is beam weapons assigned to destroy Soviet missiles in those missiles' highly vulnerable boost phase. The third line of defense is beam weapons assigned to hit repeatedly at all Soviet missiles and deployed warheads in the stratosphere. The fourth line of defense includes special effects bombs, which detonate above the level of our atmosphere, which will cause incoming warheads to tumble and therefore to burn up as they enter the atmosphere. The fifth line of defense is ground-based beam weapon systems assigned to destroy warheads as they descend through the atmosphere. The final line of defense includes throwing everything, including the kitchen sink if need be, to destroy a warhead before it reaches its target.
All right, I hope somebody has a really big kitchen sink. We might have to use a bathtub because technology has progressed slightly. Or a jacuzzi. So, okay, so that's kind of fun. Right? You guys saw there was these different, different, um, different ways you could attack these missiles. So it's really fun. But what is a laser? Yeah, yeah. And it's a funny thing. Can you pull up that electromagnetic spectrum? Thanks. What a laser is, is a laser is taking your things that you interact with every day, energies that you interact with every day, that the universe interacts with every day, whether it's, you know, visible light that we use to interact with each other, whether it's ultraviolet light, which is used for photosynthesis, whether it's radio waves that we use for broadcasting, X-rays for imaging, infrared, heat waves, you know, these are things that we interact with all the time. Or for instance, earthquakes, right? One of the fun things about earthquakes is days leading into and out of earthquakes, these different aspects of the electromagnetic spectrum tend to actually change their behavior. Like for instance, you have more infrared radiation, more heat around an epicenter that's released days before earthquakes. So these are things that the universe, that are always in motion within the universe. Now, what a laser is, is taking that energy and giving it a whole lot of power. Just like Diane talked about the dollar bill. If you use it to buy a cigarette, it's up in smoke. But you can use it to give a farmer a loan, you know, to grow some tomatoes that are tasty and green on salads and keep you alive. So the fun is that these lasers, they actually are, they're an aspect of the electromagnetic spectrum, of the sensorium, of things, the energies that you're interacting with all the time. Now here's the fun thing, right? Not every single aspect, like you get this Star Wars idea, there's this green light and it just like, you know, it shoots something and sometimes there's a red light and it shoots something else. But the fun thing is all of these different phases that you saw in the video would actually be initiated by different types of lasers. Right? Like for instance, in the initial phases, you might want to use an infrared razor, laser, sorry, that would be, an infrared laser to just melt the thing. Right? Or when you saw the shock front, right? You could use X-ray lasers to actually create a shock front so that the laser itself thinks it's going into a new space, sort of like reaching the sound barrier and its whole structure changes and it falls apart. Well, X-rays have a really hard time going through the atmosphere. So these lasers would actually have to be in space. Then you have other lasers that would be more so actual particle beams where you're shooting electrons or protons at the thing. But then those actually are curved by space and by the magnetic field of the Earth. So basically, what you're actually looking at with this SDI proposal isn't let's just figure out how to use light to shoot missiles down. But what you're actually investigating is different types of technologies and different tuning. Now, it would be much better to tune to the universe than to a warhead. Like for instance, do you have that link with the picture of the X-ray laser? Like for instance, X-ray lasers, they just started building them because they're really difficult. X-rays can actually go through mirrors. So your traditional infrared razor uses mirrors. These laser uses mirrors. These use magnets. But they're actually using this laser technology, the way LaRouche said they could 30 years ago. This laser technology can be used to actually study a single virus or a single living, or, it can be used to look at a virus. It can be used to look at proteins, things like that. And what it does is, within about a billionth of a second, it heats this thing really hard. And before it explodes, you have this, the protons, the photons of light scatter in a very specific way. And you're actually able to look at individual viruses and individual proteins. And so we're getting a certain sensorium, picture of the sensorium that we never had before, you know, when you used X-rays to look at bones or whatnot. And so the thing that LaRouche foresaw in the '80s, or you also have the Lawrence Livermore Laboratories. They're using ultraviolet light, the UV spectrum, to work on creating nuclear fusion. Like how can you get two hydrogen's to come together and create energy? You need, you need lasers for that. Which I was going to show more, but we don't have that much time. So essentially, the way that, the thing that was so, and so the reason that we have some of these things now in terms of investigations is because of LaRouche's original SDI proposal. We had an organization called the Fusion Energy Foundation that organized like hell in the '80s. We had an office in Livermore, right, in California. We had the, and also here in New Jersey, there's work on plasma and stuff being done here out of Princeton. But the idea, the certain aspects of LaRouche's proposal were picked up and we see sort of a skeleton of it today. Now, had we actually gone with the SDI, we wouldn't even be in this room. We would be doing things way more fabulous than talking about how to stop World War III. Russia, because LaRouche is creative. And the real, the real issue that LaRouche is seeing is that the tragedy is that mankind has abandoned its creative capabilities in favor of stupid things that will lead to their own doom. And his proposal for the Strategic Defense Initiative then was, look, Russia's really good at science, but they're not really good at spreading it to their population. So they need the SDI. The United States has certain weaknesses. The idea was to get these two nations to work with each other. And unfortunately, it didn't work. But now, now that this is the final moment where either we're going to be wiped off the face of the planet at the whim of Queen Elizabeth or we're going to evolve, Prince Philip, whatever, you know. I think they're actually the same person. That, that, yeah. But the idea right now is, is what is open to us if we make it through this period is a total evolution, like Diane was bringing up, a total evolution of the human species. An anti-British system, which yes, you would have in a credit system. But something like the SDI, that is the credit system. So I wanted to end, now also in two weeks at the New York meeting, I'm going to talk about this more because there's a lot to be said. But I want to end, because as cool as these technologies are, I want to end with a quote from LaRouche now, with a video clip. And you can watch it and you can see why.
We were committed to this alternative, this proposal for this, to the Soviet Union. SDI, SDI was a political solution as well as a military solution. All right, so what did they do? They took us out. And what they did to a lot of other of my friends who are older, they eliminated the factor of the people who would have done what I would have done. Systematically, just eliminated them. Like an intelligence operation. You go in, you wipe out people, kill them, get rid of them. You've got new government. You've taken over. And the public and institutions being what they are, being cowardly, they accept orders from the new masters. So you eliminate dissent by killing off the people who are credible dissenters. It's that simple. The tragedy was essentially earlier. It occurred in 1983. It occurred with a Kennedy, Ted Kennedy was key in this. Other people were key. The Bushes were key. Clinton, Reagan was willing to go. There were problems with him, but he was willing to go. We had pieces all in place. We had the command structure, everything in place to make this thing work. And by the time we got the opportunity to make it work, we were eliminated. And everyone that was close to me in the operation, with a few exceptions here and there, but in general, all these people were worked on in Germany and elsewhere and told, you never talk to him again. And the same thing goes on today. That's why I'm always talking through intermediaries. Because they're afraid of talking to me. Afraid of what happened to them, but they've got talking to me. So the way I work with them, I work with them the way I do. You have to act like a conspirator. There's no way you can do it. You're up against this kind of thing.
So I just want to end by saying that, that just like the idea in the spiritual that we started with when I was sinking down, LaRouche made a discovery decades ago, generations ago, and committed his whole life, even if it wasn't always comfortable or easy, he was thrown in jail for this SDI proposal. He committed his whole life to communicating that discovery and to each individual that he encountered in that mission to do that. And so I think that the real significance of an understanding of a credit system, of LaRouche's breakthroughs in economics, it will, it will give you that. And it's not just simply that you're willing to risk your life for something, but that you're, that you're willing to risk your life for something that gave you a deeper sense of joy, which is an actual discovery. And this is why Diane's campaign is really important and that our slate of six is really important and the ever-increasing because we're recruiting people that have the intention to have that type of mission. And this is, you know, this is why I also don't want to talk very long because I think people should talk to Diane and ask questions. But this is, this is our campaign, is that type of identity and nothing less. And you definitely have a lot of work cut out for you and so do the rest of us. But that's just, you know, that's just what I have to say right now. Kind of a small room. So if you have a question, who has a question? All right, go.
I was going to ask Diane. I know trying to impeach Obama is definitely a positive thing. But even getting him out, 90% of the Congress is all paid off by these oligarchies that you talk about. So I don't know really what much change you're going to get unless you do get somebody in like Ron Paul, who is a libertarian and he's for everyone's freedoms, which is important. And that's why the NDAA got passed because of people that are paid off. Because if you read the bill, you would have never voted for it. Making us all combat an enemy's, right off the bat. I mean, like, I mean, we have to stop World War III, but impeaching Obama's not going to stop it. And really, it's not, I mean, it's a very large problem. And, you know, Ron Paul is definitely a part of a solution and impeaching Obama is a part of the solution. But it's a complicated problem. It's not just getting him impeached.
Well, actually, it's worth thinking about. It is a large problem, so I'm glad you're here. Because the more, the better. What would it take to cause Obama to be impeached? In other words, what would be the change? Because what we're dealing with, what you're very frustrated about, as are most Americans, is this unbelievable corruption and gutlessness of the Congress in part, and other leaders. I mean, these candidates, and it is noteworthy because you do see Ron Paul fighting in terms of the war. Unfortunately, his economic policies are straight Austrian school and it would be devastating to the country, but...
Well, if Austin's ever going now, it is devastating.
Of course.
I don't think that would have any worse.
Well, it's worth thinking, what would be the shift if Obama were forced out? Because first of all, think about what Because first of all, think about what happened with Glass-Steagall. You had a bill, an amendment, McCain and Cantwell tried to introduce a Glass-Steagall amendment to the Dodd-Frank bill, which I always find these amendments somewhat humorous because Glass-Steagall would've in effect nullified the entire rest of that stupid piece of legislation. And the Senate was ready to go. And what happened was Obama personally and Barney Frank as his sidekick, arm-twisted, threatened, bought whatever they had to do to prevent that from occurring. That would've been a revolutionary change. Same thing with the healthcare plan, you had a lot of opposition to the healthcare plan. I think it was Nelson, Ben Nelson, who was one of the last holdouts and they gave him some totally, they gave him an offer which it was stupid to accept, which is, I think he got a whole bunch of money for Medicaid funding in his state or something like that, so he went along with it. But first of all, were Obama removed, that whole dynamic is different. Second of all, we have no choice, in other words, we have no guarantee of survival if this guy is not stopped. So, we have to do it, we have to figure it out. And we can't think about the odds, and that's why I particularly love Lincoln's volcano speech when he was, I think, in the State Senate of Illinois, do you know it?
No.
He talks about, it, it's very striking, because he talks about the great volcano of corruption at Washington spewing forth its lava all over the whole country, because people are telling Lincoln, "Why are you fighting? You're never gonna win, no one's gonna listen to you, you're totally outnumbered, we're gonna..." And he was fighting for a national bank. And he said, "Well, maybe I'll lose, maybe this is gonna, this great volcano of lava is gonna just plow me down and, and we're gonna lose the fight and we're gonna lose the nation." But he said, "Let it not be said that I was the last to desert, but that I never deserted." And when people fight in that way, which is the quality of the United States, I mean, what were the odds of George Washington winning the revolution? Not good. Yeah. And so that's the quality in our population, which we have to inspire. And, and we somehow have to get through to people that it is actually life and death, that there is nothing so precious that it can be an excuse for not being in this fight. Because the things that people think are impossible, that you take for granted, like simple things like having electricity, I mean, we stand to lose all of that. So I think that that's the standpoint to take it, and it would be, in a sense, a revolution for Obama to be removed. And that revolution would change everything.
Diane, I'm with you on getting rid of him, I'm not trying to be negative in any sense, but it's more than just, it's that, obviously, like I said, we have so much of the Congress is paid off already, because that's, that's the thing. It's like you, you really have to just start Congress all over. It's a new revolution.
Yeah, I mean, and that's in part what we're doing. And also, look, don't underestimate the American people, the problem is we have so few leaders. Because what happened a couple of years ago, you had the Tea Party. Well, what was the Tea Party? The Tea Party wasn't a bunch of racists or this stupid way that they're portrayed. It was a bunch of people who said, "No one represents me, I'm getting screwed," you know, and, and people were unhappy, they said, "Neither party, this, I, I can't be part of this anymore."
And the Republicans hijacked it.
Right, the Republicans co-opted it, gave a lot of money and so on, and then you have the next thing, this Occupy Wall Street, similar. You have probably, it is the case that ninety-nine percent of the population thinks that Wall Street has a large share in the problems. But again, what was that? Well, it was controlled from the top, the magazine, yeah, and Theresa Heinz Carey, the magazine that started this, Adbusters, is owned by the Heinz, Heinz family, so that's, so it never went anywhere. But how many occupations popped up all over the country? I mean, towns that had six hundred people and you had forty of them camping out, right? I mean, really? So, the, the population actually is prepared if we can organize them and if we can grow enough and expand enough, and that's part of the key of using the internet, 'cause we sure as heck are not gonna get coverage on national television. Yeah, and we're not gonna get the mainstream media...
But that's also why they wanna tie down the internet.
Oh, sure. They wanna do all kinds of things.
And that's another bill that's passing, you know, like, everywhere we turn, we're getting stomped on.
But people don't like it. They don't like it. Look what's happening with this NDAA. I don't know how many people saw this Stephen Colbert thing on the NDAA, it's very, it's blistering. And Colbert was not someone who was very outspoken against Obama before, but this thing has pushed him over the top. So, the leadership, it's a funny kind of war, you know, in warfare, sometimes you have to replace all the generals, in a sense, that's, that's what we're looking at. Yeah.
You talk about Obama being impeached.
Yeah.
It's been so long that Obama hasn't been impeached, so how is this gonna go on before I, is he on his third term? Are you gonna wait till you get to the fourth term before he's impeached?
Well, I think that depends on you and everybody here, and what people are willing to do. And we've gotta move the population. See, the point is, we will not survive. Having him as president is not an option. It's not an option for mankind. So, it means that the approach is to do it. And I cannot tell you how it's gonna happen, I don't know, you know, we're playing, he's doing something next week in New York and we're gonna be out there with a bunch of giant mustache signs, maybe you'll have a nervous breakdown. I, I mean, you don't know, think about Nixon, it's worth remembering, he said, "I am not a crook, he was gonna fight," and all of a sudden, the next morning, he's resigning. What, and then everyone said, "Oh yeah, of course, I always knew he was gonna resign." Like, if Obama gets impeached, everyone's gonna say, "Oh yeah, it was obvious, I mean, he killed Gaddafi, he did the NDAA, I mean, it's obvious he was gonna be impeached." That's what all the people would say who are now saying, "You could never do it." So, it, it, you have to fight from the standpoint that... Do you know that we charge, there is a fee for pessimistic comments in this meeting?
Yeah, yeah. You have raised so many questions and answered so many of them also, but in each one of those answers to me, as I have pursued this thing, and I call it my curbside conversation approach, that I do all the time as I'm working, and one of the things I do, of course, is concentrated application of technologies, and I've been forced in my daily process for years to do this in a creative way. I sometimes involve, and it's kind of known about me, they call me for a problem that can't be solved, and I need to do it right now, and it can't be done. And I have to do that. So, what are we talking about? One of the things about the aspect of postponed consumption, that's a logical thing. However, I have been forced to say, "Oh, logic is not a complete human reasoning process." And you need to think about that, you see, because our creativity. And the fact is that, when you go into the space program, and one of the outcomes of the SDI that didn't actually happen as such, we have had tremendous returns on that as we did the space program. It wasn't postponing anything, it was going out and doing something by a method of public process that resulted in the application of human labor. By actually sitting here today, like the people in the Massachusetts Bay Colony did, where they, they had town meetings for what reason? They had reason to be fearful that if people were not doing the right things with their labor, they, today, today, they'd come winter time, they're not gonna make it. So they're actually making plans about what everybody does, and they invented the pine tree shilling to actually direct the flow of productivity where it was most powerfully used to make sure that that goal was accomplished. Now, this is credit system. But the other point that's been said here that I, I wanna comment about is the concept of corruption. And there's two aspects of that you need to look at. One of them is concentrated corruption, we see it in Congress. But there's another aspect of it that is actually bigger, much, much bigger. It is a corruption within the minds of us right here in this room and elsewhere, perhaps more so elsewhere because we're here, perhaps because we recognize some of that. But the fact is, is the corruption is here among us, that we do not understand except fully that the economic system that the Massachusetts Bay Colony used to survive and build the foundation that made George Washington's success possible, and on and on and on to this day, was in fact the overcoming of that corruption of mind by a process of motivation of the minds of large numbers of people, which we might easily surrender and say, "Well, you can't do it," like with Lincoln. But the fact is, we either do it. So the economic thing, the aspect of getting rid of Obama, is in fact because the economic solution must be accomplished, and Obama is a concentrated force of corruption with his thumb over the fountain. And as long as he's there holding his thumb, we're allowing him to do that. See, it's like cutting off our oxygen supply and we're allowing him to do it. So that is a massive corruption we need to deal with so that we understand the necessity of getting rid of Obama.
See, it's an interesting question, because how do you, how do you win a fight against that kind of corruption? And now I don't mean the Congress, I mean our neighbors, the population. How, how do you do that? Do you win it by force, like when we're out there campaigning in the field, we have tasers? And if people don't come over to the table, you zap them and put them through excruciating pain and force them? No. The question is, you wanna reach, you wanna figure out some way to inspire them, to find that which, in them, which is human. And ironically, one of the most effective ways of combating that corruption is to make yourself an example, which is to take leadership in a way which requires an enormous amount of courage and also might require an enormous amount of opposition, including death. I had a friend who used to talk about the question of, he used to say, "Where are the churches?" Because there was an election, you could say, between Jesus Christ and Barabbas. And he used to say, "Where are the churches for Barabbas? Didn't Barabbas win the election?" I mean, everyone said, "Let him live, we're gonna crucify this other guy." And somehow, the guy that lost the election became much more of a factor in human history than the one who won. And I think this is, it's really important to consider when LaRouche talks about this question of immortality. I mean, why do people respond to LaRouche, or why were people... Another thing is the enemy, our enemies do have a certain cunning, I wouldn't say they're smart or creative. But you take Martin Luther King, he was really critical, and when he was alive, the people around him had enormous courage because of his courage. And he made very clear that he wasn't afraid of dying. When he was killed, there was no one left of his peers who possessed that same quality of courage, and the movement was able to be destroyed, although not frankly without winning certain major fights. And LaRouche often talks about this, and this question of the so-called weak force in history, that when you win, often what wins is not the might, it's not the power, it's not the physical force, or money, or popularity, or numbers. But it's, it's a certain kind of power because you conduct yourself in accord with the universe, which after all is much bigger and more powerful than anyone here or anything we're up against. And that has a certain resonating quality. So that's not to say that I can guarantee we can win, I can't, I think it looks like we're in a heck of a lot of trouble. On the other hand, I do strongly think there is a quality of goodness in the American people which we can mobilize, and we can get people to stop being such stupid, pathetic, gutless, cowering, you know, sucker-ups of popular opinion, and we can, we have, we have a chance Yes, Maggie?
I was in Iran in nineteen seventy-seven. The Shah was sick of cancer, we had spies, you know, they continually had the savat, you know, spying upon us, and they actually came to Ellen Stewart, with the Lamama Company, and said, "You're gonna have to go." And thank goodness she knew the Shah's brother-in-law, and he came, he watched our performance. And he heard the brothers say, "And mother," and these kinds of things, and that's why they asked us to go, because the language was not acceptable to them, the Muslim culture. I found the people extraordinary. We were very aware that the well-to-do have been to concentration camps, more or less. We were very well aware that we were being spied upon. But the thing that I carried away with me, first of all, the gentility of the people, the intelligence, one, no one was fat, why? They were all slender, they all stood like this, it was amazing. Because there wasn't any water and they didn't have food to eat. If you thought it was a little difficult to walk over the food when they went like this over the tables and put it into buckets somewhere on the floor, they didn't, couldn't waste water on tablecloths and napkins, it wasn't there. When I looked, where are our chaperones, you know? They're in the hospital with nosebleeds and high blood pressure and salt in the water. And the tea in Tehran is the best, 'cause it's got so much salt in it, you wouldn't think to put a salt shaker over your teacup. Now, I was aware that you, they just did not have water. Then when I was in Shiraz and the Dutchman said to me, who was there as some sort of diplomat, he said, "See up there?" And I was getting, "Oh my God, will I ever get out of here?" Because we're surrounded by hills of sand, I mean, just like a circle of mountains of sand. And I would remind myself that we came in in an airplane and we were able to get out. He said, "Over there is Afghanistan, it's all sand." And all I heard the people say is, "We wanna be like Israel, we wanna take their, use their brilliance, we're working with the Italians to develop nuclear power, because if the Israelis can green the desert, then so can we." Now, no one mentions this. No one that I have heard talks about the need for water in Iran. Basically, they must be looking at, they're talking about electricity, but, ah, they need water to survive. Well, I'm out west with Ambed Energy, if I go, I'm there, you know, a company in Dallas, it's just all brown, everything's burned up. Cattlemen are selling two thousand cattle, they've been in the business for two hundred years, this is family, this goes back a couple of centuries and gone. We have the same problem with water, only it's not as bad as what they've got over there. I've heard every excuse used, but no one talks about water. At the moment, to get natural gas, they're gonna frac the Delaware Water Gap.
Yeah, right.
We don't hear anything much about this, except, oh, in New York City, 'cause fifteen million people use that water. And Pennsylvania is a mess with it, you know, and they are beginning to talk about that. But why are we not talking about the fact that Iran cannot really survive without water? Nor can we, of course.
We are desolidization, we're pushing up this question hard.
Now, my question is, why don't we bring this up? Certainly, the New York Times is not bringing it up, but we certainly might, it would sit in with what we discuss.
You may know that LaRouche did some really important work on this in the seventies, where he met with actually members of the Ba'ath Party in Iraq, he met with Israeli leaders in the peace party, and the, there was gonna be an agreement along the lines of what you're saying, with a massive amount of funding from the oil-rich nations to work with the Israelis to build a whole system to green the deserts, the whole region. And what happened was Henry Kissinger got wind of it and went bonkers and went to blow it all up. And, yeah, because, because again, the, the intent from the city of London is genocide, and they're really going for it. I mean, the point of a nuclear war, you have to say, "Well, who wants a nuclear war?" Well, it would get rid of the six billion people, if you think the world has too many people. So, there's actually, we've published a great deal in detail on this, and Noapa, of course, would raise the issue, sort of like the transcontinental railroad, building it here inspired the Trans-Siberian Railroad and everything else. If we took the lead and said, "We're gonna address this," it would obviously inspire and transform people all over the planet. But we, we have to crush the British Empire, we can't, there's really not a point in discussing it unless we eliminate them as a factor on the planet. a factor on the planet.
Well, it might clarify and help Americans to understand, because when you read this, you think, "Oh, they have a nuclear, you know, I talk to intelligent people, quote-unquote." But that was a report from two thousand...
Well, the question is, are they intelligent enough to dump Obama?
Oh.
I mean, that because, if they're gonna go along with Obama, they're not gonna understand anything else.
Well, I didn't understand that, but then I said, "Did you see someone come out and attack their own? Their own?" And you say, "Wait a minute, who did that? Oh, Hitler, that's right, Hitler did that. He came here and punched our governor Patterson. Now, isn't he brown and doesn't he need, also send me fine, right in the face? And we were without a governor really in effect. What he did to Patterson is unbelievable."
Right. How about what he did to Rangel?
Charles Rangel. Charlie Rangel, who predicted all of what has, has, you know, current...
Yeah, who accused Obama of acting like Dick Cheney. And also asked if he wanted to disband the Congress. So that was a little much to bear.
Yes, a little much for him. And he also mentioned the fact that they were going after the poor and putting them in the army. And they came up with a brilliant idea of putting the African-American black and the black soldiers, who don't all, are not necessarily African-American, Liberia, Liberia, which was brilliant, thank you, Charles Rangel.
Right. Now, actually, that you bring that up, there's a few things I just wanted to say here, because we really have to escalate on the Congress. I think they're home through, I guess, early, the middle of next week. And all the ones in our area seem to be hiding from us. I think they know we have a large number of people who can go to their town hall meetings. So unlike remote parts of the country where we don't have LaRouche organizers, here, they don't seem to be having a lot of public town meetings. But we should go to their offices. They have to move on removing Obama. That is the one topic. Every, we need a credit system, we need Glass-Steagall, but we know that that is not possible with Obama as president. And everyone here should become an absolute pain to your congressmen and their aides on this question. And I can tell you, there was a bit of a shift a month ago. I think it's now abated because the stupidity and insanity around these pathetic elections. But, I mean, look, and, no, April of two thousand nine, LaRouche gave the webcast where he said Obama was a failed personality, a Nero, Hitler narcissist. And we put the mustache on Obama in May around the healthcare plan. All kinds of people who used to be in touch with us then cut off contact and said, "We're not gonna talk to you, we can't meet, you know, don't see us, blah, blah, blah." Then, a number of things began occurring and a lot of the people who cut off contact begot in, came into re-contact around Glass-Steagall, around some of these other initiatives. They didn't wanna talk about impeachment. Interestingly, I know a few weeks ago, we got a report that people actually were not refusing meetings on the topic of impeachment, that people in the Congress were willing to discuss this. None of them has been willing yet to introduce it, and that's both parties, both parties. And you may have seen on our website, this Professor Francis Boyle, who is an expert on constitutional law, I guess he's in Chicago, who said he would offer his services gratis to any congressman who was interested in launching impeachment proceedings, because he also thinks we are on an inevitable course of destruction with this guy in the White House. So I would urge everybody here to really do this, absolutely, call your congressman, go to their office, find out if they are having any meetings, if they are having any public meetings or anything like that, let us know, please, because we can go there. But otherwise, this, we just have to demand it. And we have to also talk about World War III. That's a peculiar thing, because as Stephanie said, it's not really in the press. People don't have a sense that we're, people don't know, it's so outrageous. You had President Medvedev give a national TV address saying, "We're putting all of our missile alert systems on combat readiness." You would think that would be news. No. So people don't realize that we are on a hair trigger to a thermonuclear war. China and Russia are clear, a lot of people in Europe are clear, there are articles in the Swedish press about all the US aircraft carriers that are on their way to the Mediterranean. I mean, people internationally know it, but it's being kept from the American people. So it's very important that you discuss this with people and tell them, "You don't believe me? Why don't you Google Medvedev? Google Rigozen? Google the China people's daily? Why don't you find out what these nations are actually saying and get in reality?" And they might then become a little more motivated to remove Obama when they see that that's where we're headed. But I do just wanna say that. I think we should end the meeting here. But we are gonna be getting the campaign, of course, into full gear. The petitions will be available the end of the month, probably. That's not such a big deal, but things, there's only, we only need two hundred ballot signatures. We'll go way over on that. And then we just really have to fight. And we cannot let anyone off the hook on this Obama question, absolutely not. That has to be, otherwise, we lose the country.
After people visit the literature table to their left, they should see a lead to their right on taking responsibility for these congressmen. So I'm gonna have a roadblock there. I'm trying to get behind you, but they'll be assigning you to your congressman.
Stand up, you're counted.
Literature table to the left, Congressman.
All right. Thank you for coming.